Are you a ten to two person or are you gonna have to come and change your registration?
Um, no.
Yeah, it's next four.
We're all better than that.
There you go.
I don't think so.
I haven't seen money right now.
All of a sudden we do.
You're going all the way before.
My toe been being pulled off. Probably saved me that.
I've seen that. It's been a process. It's been a while.
Like welcome everybody, please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out on this wonderful evening. If you see it going on.
Chris Ravish. Here. Paul Palmville. Nicole Jones.
Here.
Wendy Anderson. Mark Kuchet.
Do we have any additions, additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to add to the consent agenda, item H, employment of Stevie Joe Williams as Title I Prayer Pro, add simple L.
Alright.
That's alright.
The approval of the agenda, so move.
Important.
You got Chris this time?
Alright.
Always in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? You got all that already?
I got it.
Does anybody from the community like to comment on the agenda items? Uh, student Spartans.
Thank you, Mr. Kucher. Trinity. Hi. What up, y'all? We're gonna nominate our students of the month, uh, for the month of October. Trinity Briggs was our student of the month for the month of October of the middle school. She was nominated by Ms. Maxwell. Ms. Maxwell said that Trinity is very polite, organized, and dedicated young lady who is setting goals for herself and striving to achieve them. Performance is advanced math, in advanced math has been at the top of her class, and she's a great role model and positive influence for all students. She is caring, willing to help others, and very interested each and every day about what we are doing in class. I see great things from Trinity. Mr. Burke, wouldn't you wanna do that right now?
No, after you've done ball.
After the next one?
Yep.
Thank you, congratulations. Next up is our high school student of the month, Priya Austin. Austin's our October student of the month for our high school. He was nominated by Ms. Moniz. Ms. Moniz said that Austin is always on task, he is an extremely hard worker, he is a helpful, kind, and inclusive to all students. Austin Shamm, our student of the month for the month of October.
Next up is the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda and pay bills totaling $616,061.75.
We have a motion to support, any discussion? Your roll call vote, please.
Mike Bummer.
Yes.
Nicole Jones.
Yes.
Chris Ravish.
Upsting.
Paul Palmville.
Yes.
Jared Kleymick.
Yes.
Wendy Anderson.
Yes.
Mark Kuchet.
Yes. Motion is approved. Communication, Mr. Vu.
Thank you, Mr. Kucher. First off, the emergency operations plan is something we've been working on. The state's been pushing, um, schools, we've had emergency operation plans in the past, but there's been a little more formal process. Mr. Ferb and I have been working together. We are in the process of actually working with Tom Meinsberg. I don't know if you've come up with Tom Meinsberg, he works beside our home of schools. And, um, we're gonna try and get that, we have to get that approved at a board meeting before January 1, right?
Correct.
So we'll be bringing in an emergency operations plan before the board, um, probably in next month, probably the second meeting in December. But it's based, a lot of the things we have done, one meeting in December. It's today. I think somewhere around there. Yeah, let's add Linwood. So we'll have it at the board meeting in December. Unless you'd like a special board meeting somewhere later in December. But, um, it is basically a continuation of what we're doing. I just wanted to update you that we will, I will be asking you to approve it in December so we have, we're in compliance with the, with the new laws. Any questions about that? All, all schools in the state have to do that. The good thing is, a lot of the things that we've got in place are appropriate, so it's just a matter of filling in the forms and the assurances that we have to send into the state. Um, reproductive health, I want to update you on another state mandated, um, topic. Our reproductive health curriculum periodically needs to be reviewed. Our committee needs to meet, and we are fortunate enough to have Mr. Kucher, our board president, as, on our reproductive health team, and him and Mr. Keenan actually attended a conference recently to kind of look at our, our curriculum and what we need to do in the future. Do you wanna kind of hit on that just a little bit?
Yeah, there's some, um, discussion in the senate right now of eliminating health and PE as requirements for graduation. Um, as a health teacher myself, I'm really against that if the kids need it, um, and there's all kinds of evidence for that, so I kind of know where this is coming from. Um, but then, there's other elements, it's always changing, there's new methods and ways to do things. So, that was a sex ed supervisors meeting, uh, from, for the entire region. We had people from town, us, and Stanish and Bay City, they're down in Saginaw. So, uh, there's more training this week and then next week too that we're gonna go to, so. But, there's a, always gotta be on top of things.
Yeah, and it is a mandate that you have to update your committees and stuff, and we're also gonna be doing a MiFi survey, it's called. It's a, it's a survey that actually talk, asks our students about their risky behaviors. Basically, it's, uh, we do it every, every other year, I believe.
They do that, yeah. About sex, drugs, rock and roll, or something like that, so.
Parents have an opt-out form as well, in order to have their students to take that, but it's basically, it feeds our programs for substance abuse and that type of things. I believe it's, um, it's given biannually to our, I think it's seven, nine, and eleven.
Yeah.
But we get good data from that, which drives the reproductive health committees throughout the state.
It is anonymous for the students, and I know people contend that the data isn't reliable because it's anonymous, um, but through double checks, uh, it comes back pretty solid, and we can adjust our curriculum because of it. We added the sex ed curriculum, uh, changing it from, um, no abstinence, or from abstinence only to doing the complete sex ed, which I think is beneficial. Um, so we'll keep, that'll, that'll drive what we do, and the decisions we need to make curriculum wise.
Okay, thank you. Pupil accounting audit, we recently completed that. I shouldn't say we, because I didn't have anything to do with it, but Donnie did. Donnie got her feedback on our first pupil accounting audit. Kim is actually the auditor down at Bay Area and ISD, and basically, they go through all our numbers and our counts, and, and basically, it's how we get funded, and, uh, from what Kim had shared with us, Donnie did an outstanding job, so. She sits around running with her pupil accounting, believe me, it's a big undertaking, a lot of numbers, a lot of different scenarios with kids and partial FTE, and so hats off to you, and, and we're glad we have you. Any questions about that? Alright, I'm all done.
Alright.
Oh, one more thing. On the, uh, I wrote it down. On, uh, the website, all the board members currently, their names are listed. Um, I had an email recently from a gentleman, and he had a good point, there was no contact information for our board members, so I'd like to add an email address to each one of our board members on the website, and, uh, make that like PASB email, which you could end up forwarding to your own email if need be, and so if you didn't wanna check multiple emails, um, that way, we could, um, at least you could have contact information there they could email. Uh, the gentleman also mentioned something to the effect of, um, you know, we put our, we put the notices out there, he was looking to see if we could put our agendas on the website as well, and Donnie's made that happen for this meeting, so we'll not only post the times and dates, but we'll have the agendas up there too. So, thought those were some good ideas, and, and that way, if you get emails, obviously you'll know, um, they're coming through the, our, um, board education website. Any, any objections about doing that?
You're gonna set it up, Donnie?
Yeah. You'll get an email probably from Jay or Donnie.
Yeah, who was that, Joe?
Okay.
It'll be Palmville. It'll be your last name.
I think we'll come over here, I don't, they just probably don't know it.
I'll check my email, it's probably full.
It seems like a long time ago, I thought it, did I remember what we set up?
Yeah, I think, I think we, yeah. But, we'll get you things here.
Okay, thanks. But that's awesome, you know that, because, you know, I just went to a class this weekend on community relations, and that was one of those suggestions, putting the agenda on the website ahead of time, and so I was, okay, you get there.
Good deal.
Alright, she might read that personally.
Yeah, I did recognize that email.
You know, I think at one time Kim did have the agendas out there, I don't recall, but
they weren't out there recently since you've been here. And I don't think she put them on, but it's, um, it, our, our minutes are on, I think your, your minutes have to be on, they're there.
Right.
And the dates and times, but just the agendas weren't there.
Be good, they can take a look at it ahead of time, so if they wanna come in, we'll get some more people. Alright, anything else, Mr. Vu? Done, done for sure now?
I'm done.
Alright. Mr. Rosecrans, student report.
Alright, so, for the middle school student council, they recently attended a, a fall leadership training. So five members of the middles, of the middle school student council attended the fall leadership training in Frankenmuth on Thursday, November 7th. Students had the opportunity to learn leadership skills while networking with middle school students from across the state. For our high school student council, Halloween in the Hallways. Nearly 750 children from our community participated in this year's Halloween in the Hallways event. These children and their families were welcomed to a dry, safe, and warm environment where more than 90 high school students and community members showed them with tasty treats. A huge thank you to the numerous anonymous donations of candy that helped student council accomplish the task of providing for each of our visitors. Fall blood drive. Student council collected over 30 pints of blood at the fall blood drive on Monday, November 4th. These lifesaving units of blood, of blood have the potential to save up to 90 lives in our community. Gratitude weed. The middle school and high school students, student councils will be teaming up to sponsor gratitude weed from November 25th to the 27th. Each day will feature a dress-up theme, as well as an activity to help our students remember to be thankful for all the great things in their lives. Middle school robotics, the middle school competition. Seven middle school students completed a robotics competition in Bullet Creek on Saturday, November 2nd, 2019. The middle school team ended the day in 11th place out of nearly 40 teams. This represents the highest placement for any middle school team in school history. High school volleyball, district competition. The varsity volleyball team defeated Farwell to advance to the district finals before bowing out to the Jack Pine Conference champions, Beaverton. Congratulations to the varsity volleyball team on their season. English department, Stratford trip. The trip to Stratford, Ontario was a huge success this year. Students enjoyed the action-packed show Billy Elliot, as well as great weather in Canada. The English department is considering Hamlet for next year's trip. National Honor Society, Thanksgiving meals. The National Honor Society will be shopping for Thanksgiving meals on November 21st. Food will be purchased for fifth through sixth grade, sorry, for five to six middle school students or high school stu, students that were identified as needy by Ms. Lozaro. Shopping was made possible by a $400 donation from the Great Lakes Outdoorsman Foundation. As well with this, I have one more thing. The foreign language department. Ms. Pappy took Spanish 2, 3, and 4 students to a foreign language day at Saginaw Valley State University Thursday, November 7th. They represented the school while with first place in singing Gretchen Linsner, third place in singing Lily Goes On. In the category international awareness, consisting of flags around the world, current issues, geography, and port, and foreign politics, uh, the second place team was Austin Shram, Carson Moore, Nathaniel Rosecrans, and Nate Corbin. And in third place, Tori Sharp, Nolan Zier, Daylon Bain, and Tyler Floyd. And these were schools all across Michigan that attended this.
Great, great. The students are busy and doing well. Mr. Ferb.
Thank you, um, just a couple things, I just wanted to, um, inform the board that the district school improvement, um, team will be meeting December 10th. Uh, we're beginning a new format, uh, where we'll have a group of, um, our district school improvement representatives will meet down at the ISD to do some training, um, at the ISD, so we can come back and work with our school improvement teams here in the building, rather than having 37 schools converge on the ISD on one day and trying to get, um, resources to all those buildings, uh, being able to set up, uh, for example, Lisa Zell, who does a lot with the data, uh, would come to our district to work with our teams, and would be available just for our team. So, uh, we're looking at that format, and then, uh, just wanted to remind the board that, um, we are beginning our parent engagement process, uh, which was one of our corrections required. Uh, we began our book study, uh, we had a great meeting this, uh, this afternoon at Linwood, uh, we're looking for parents to participate in that process, uh, and really we want, uh, to get their feedback, and, and really, how do we, how do they want us to communicate with them, how, what do they need, and what kind of help do they need, uh, from us to help their parents be successful? So, uh, we'll be looking for volunteers during that process. Okay? Thank you.
Any other administrative staff, like, Peter? Everybody's good? Uh, we have a policy committee meeting.
So, we did have a policy committee meeting, and we reviewed some Neola policies that needed, um, updates. Um, I think we reviewed the dress code policy, were we gonna?
Yeah. Ask them what's up.
Yeah.
Or do you wanna do it now?
Um, yeah, no, if you want, you're, you're gonna go over them?
Sure.
Changes, or did you want me to go over to those?
If you wanna finish the policies, or I can go through the dress code.
Um, basically, that's it, we kind of, we reviewed the dress code policy, any changes? Um, and then you went ahead and, and I think you already put them on the website too, so.
They're on the website already?
Are they?
Oh, yeah, no.
Oh, okay.
I wanted to get it through the board first, and then, then we may go that way.
Great.
Uh, so when was that meeting? So, yeah, we just had a policy committee meeting, um, obviously, there's been some talk about the dress code. Um, so we talked, and we made some changes that we think are appropriate, um, we did confer with some parents, so they made some, a couple of suggestions that we added into this as well. Um, first one, um, footwear must be worn at all times, so before, and there's a sheet that we put out in front, before it used to say the word appropriate, so instead of appro, it used to be appropriate footwear must be worn, we removed that word, uh, appropriate because it's kind of subjective, um, so just, kids, as long as they're wearing shoes, something covering their feet, um, that's what we're looking for. Uh, number two, we didn't change, so no jewelry or accessories that could cause injury. Um, number three, uh, skirts, uh, shorts and jeans that expose the skin must reach or surpass the fingertips when the arms are, and hands are naturally extends at the sides of the body. Previously, uh, the unit of measure was, I believe, what'd I say, I think it was three inches above the knee. So, uh, one suggestion that we got from our parent was that, when you talk like three inches, it's really hard for a girl, or somebody to go to the store and get a ruler out and measure, so, just when the arms are naturally extended, um, that's gonna be the unit of measure. So if you're going shopping, it's a quick reference guide that you can use, um, to help with that. Um, undergarments must be worn at all times, that's, uh, the same, we didn't change anything with that. Um, hats, caps, sunglasses, headscarves may be worn, or may not be worn by students upon entering the building, unless approved by administration. So, it's, before it used to be, um, from 8 to 2:48, now it's just as soon as they enter, uh, they're, you're gonna be asked to take off their hats, which, um, we've been seeing this year, and there hasn't been any issue.
Which we developed.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, you know, we did listen to some concerns too, as parents too, and, and one of the things was that, you know, like, somebody had some concerns, what if there's a medical condition or something like that?
Oh.
And that's why we said if it's approved by administration.
Right.
So if you come in, and, you know, I think that our staff is very reasonable.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you come in, you explain, so look at, this is, this is an issue that my child has, you know, right?
And we have several students in the building that currently have medical conditions, and as long as they come to us and talk about it.
So that's why it does say that, unless it's approved by administration, so there's exceptions to that.
Yep, yep. Um, pajamas are not permitted, this is something new. A lot of the surrounding school districts, uh, that we, we looked at some data from them, um, none of them allowed pajamas, and we feel that pajamas are inappropriate to wear to school, along with many of, of the other districts in the region as well, so that's something that was in there. Um, number seven, uh, that was not changed, no garments, t-shirts, jackets, sweatshirts, um, basically, having anything with profanity, or tobacco, or alcohol, or drugs, or anything like that can't be worn. Um, number eight was another unit of measure that we changed, so tank tops are permitted to be worn as an outer garment, if they have at least three finger width, uh, shoulder straps. So before, I think it was again, three inches, um, for a shoulder strap, again, it's really hard for somebody to go shopping, bust out the ruler, and say, oh, three inches, we're good. So now it's just three fingers, so if you can show, if you, if you get questioned, you come to the office, three fingers, okay, you're good to go. Um, so that's what we went with, with that. Number nine, um, low-cut, see-through, strapless, or backless dresses, uh, in shirts of any clothing that could expose the areas of the stomachs, sides, or the breasts are prohibited. Before, it used to be, um, additional clarification, what's it, so, there wasn't any clarification on what was appropriate and what was not appropriate. This kind of outlines, if we see any of the stomachs aside, sides of the breast, um, that's gonna, that's gonna be a no-go. Um, number 10 was a change, common decency requires no bare midriffs or plunging necklines that expose the cleavage. Um, before, it was just a plunging neckline, and we had some questions of what a plunging neckline was, so if a neckline is going down and you can see cleavage, that would be inappropriate. Um, number 11 is the same, safety glasses must be worn at all times during shop and science classes. Uh, number 12 stayed the same, that's, uh, discusses extracurricular, co-curricular events and wearing, uh, appropriate garments. Well, I'll read it, so, uh, anything that represents a school, hope, and hope that our appearance will represent one of pride in oneself, his, in his or her community. Um, number 13 stayed the same, wearing or displaying gang-related articles, accessories will result in disciplinary action. Um, number 14, we did add one thing, um, request of wearing unusual clothing, uh, it used to be tuxedos and costumes, we added medical attire, because a lot of our students, um, will wear medical attire if they're going to Skill Center, if they have some job shadowing that they're doing, um, so that was added in, um, that it must be approved by administration. So as long as, again, you're coming in, hey, got class, and then we know that, as long as you tell us once, we'll know that, go moving forward, and it'll be good. Hooded sweatshirts or hoodies must be worn without covering the student's head, uh, that stayed the same. Headbands are allowed, and bandanas are not allowed. Um, we had some question about headband, um, and in the past, it's been that it must be at the hairline, we're not really gonna go nitpick with that, so if you're wearing a headband, as long as you can see, uh, we're good with that. Um, bandanas, uh, do that they're gang affiliated, and, um, we don't allow bandanas to be worn, and that's consistent with everybody in the region that we looked at with their policy. Number 17, coat jackets and backpacks, backpacks are not permitted in the classroom unless approved by administration. Drawstring bags are allowed to be taken into physical education class. Um, this policy, coats and jackets was already listed in the middle school handbook, not sure why it didn't get listed in the high school handbook, um, but we added this, uh, just as a reference for safety, um, and again, we polled all the schools in the region and in the area, and none of them allow, uh, backpacks or coats to be worn, um, in the classroom for safety reasons, because we've had so many tragedies across the country with things, um, with weapons and things like that, so, um, we're gonna stay consistent in keeping our kids safe.
Kyle, just a note on that.
Yeah.
If, if there's a classroom that's, obviously, the, the unit ventilator's not working, and and there's a need for jackets or coats, the teacher's gonna have the ability to allow them in that classroom to wear a coat.
Yeah.
But for the most part, we want our students to be jacket-free, um, like Tom Meinsberg, he's our emergency, uh, manager, he, he recommends no coats or book bags. But if it's a, uh, and just looking at our temperatures, because I have the ability to look at our room temps, most of our rooms are between 68 and 70, 71. I mean, I can see all the, and if there's a cold room, and let's say, unit vent, we can't move a classroom, there won't be the ability to, to wear coats.
Right.
It's not meant to freeze kids out, it's just meant to really be a safety.
Yeah, and there are scenarios, like I know at the beginning of, as, when it started to get cold, there were some cold classrooms, so as long as we know that and we're communicating, we're, we're not gonna be sticklers with that. If you're cold, and it's 59 degrees in the classroom, darn right, you can put a coat on, because it's freezing. So, that's, uh, not anything that we're privy to saying no to, so, um, as long as there's communication, we're reasonable people, so, we can definitely adjust to that. Um, so that's all I have.
Any questions from the board?
No, I just wanna say that, you know, yeah, the, I mean, we spent a particular time, I think, kind of reviewing it, and trying to make it as clear as possible, kind of clear things off, things that were subjective, we tried to clarify those, they weren't so subjective anymore. Um, you know, getting the other schools' policies that are surrounding us, and, um, comparing to make sure that we weren't, um, you know, too strict or too lenient with ours, and we're kind of aligning with other schools around us, um, and I think we did a good job of that, and actually, ours were more lenient. I think, too, is just mainly how it's enforced, and trying to really look at that too, and clarify that, who's going to be enforcing it, and make sure it's consistent, so.
And there is, so I just, there, it's highlighted in the policy at the, at the bottom, that it's very hard for administration or the school board, um, to anticipate new trends in, in clothing, um, so if there is, uh, something that's disruptive or distracting, administration does have the right to, to rule on that, um, so that's, that's noted in the handbook, it's always been noted in the handbook. Again, um, if it's unreasonable, you guys think it's, or parents think it's unreasonable, um, just call us up, we'll have a conversation about it, and, uh, that's, uh, that's the biggest thing, we just wanna be able to communicate with parents, I know we're really pushing that family engagement, you call us, you talk to us, we're reasonable people, so, definitely hear your help.
Any other questions?
I have a question. What, what about the pictures, the, the student ID pictures that are taken in the fall of the year? Does this pertain to those pictures also, or is this just dress code, code in the classroom at school?
I guess, what, what do you mean?
Orientation. Orientation pictures, sometimes you get kids that wear off-the-shoulder tops and stuff, does this have any?
They should, yeah, they should.
I can speak to that. Chris, we put out a note on Facebook this year in anticipation of our orientation, we also talked with the photographers, we kind of outlined for them what we were looking at, that came to our attention, um, last year, and they said, you know, we had kids walking in the gym for orientation, it was 85 degrees, so we addressed it this year, we kind of anticipated that, we talked with both the students and the photographers, and we didn't have a single issue this year that the photographer shared with us.
What about senior pictures? Does that have anything to do with this, or is that totally different?
Yeah, I mean, that's off-school ground.
This is, okay, this, this is about safety and distraction in the classroom is what it really comes down to, um, so.
That's being, you know, when they're here, and under our guidance.
There's a few that, if you want them in the yearbook, I think there, there's some guidelines that the yearbook advisor has.
So there are some guidelines?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just, you know, we, we wanna know, talking to Kyle today, coats, a coat, um, we, we don't have the best, you know, a coat is a coat, is a hoodie, a hoodie is, you know, is a zip-up fleece a coat? We're gonna try and do our best, but I think most people know that jack, an outer, something that has an outer shell that's a, that you wear into the building is probably gonna be a coat. But are we opposed to people wearing layered sweatshirts? No, but I think, if, if there's people that are want, wanting us to define that, I don't know if Webster, if we wanted Webster's definition or what.
Right, yeah, and I think that's really important to have that administrator discretion there, because it is so hard, because if we put something that's specific, then you can bet that everybody's gonna toke that line, so, really important, and, you know, we're hired to make the decisions that are gonna keep the school district and everybody safe, so, uh, it'll, it would come to us, and we would make that a question.
Well, a comment, so from a student's perspective, uh, what's going on here with the code issue, is a lot of students seem to be very confused about what exactly is going on, so, I think that the students need to be brought more into, like how you just explained it, perfectly explained it, it makes so much more sense now from what I've heard before, because students are creating their own assumptions, and they're trying to make
because it is so hard. Because if we put something that's specific, then you can bet that everybody's going to tote that line. So really important. And, you know, we're hired to make the decisions that are going to keep the school district and everybody safe. So it'll come to us and we'll make that question.
Well, comments. So from a student's perspective, what's going on here with the code issues? A lot of students seem to be very confused about what exactly is going on. So I think that the students need to be brought more into, like how you just explained it, perfectly explained it. It makes so much more sense now from what I've heard before. Students are creating their own assumptions.
Oh, yeah.
And they're trying to make it sound like, you know, it's a military camp. But in reality, it's a safety issue. So I think that something needs to be done, maybe an assembly, an announcement, something needs to be done to inform the students exactly what's going on.
Thank you so much. I think it's just good to do students' perspective. You're right. I think we should do more to do that and communicate that with the students.
Right. I know Mr. Vandris and I have talked about putting together, and Mr. View have talked about putting a student committee together. So a meeting monthly with the student committee with a population, a variety of the population of the Pinconning schools, our Pinconning kids in school. And basically, having these conversations, having an agenda, talking about these things. So then, they get back up to their community and they can educate them. So that's in the works.
Any other discussion on this one? All right, thanks for the report.
Do you want to, do we open it up to the, is there, are we not?
Well, only public comment.
We'll leave for public comment on that. Thanks, Kyle.
Yep.
No, only to, well, I guess I'll leave it up to the board. Well, it's a matter of if you want to, well, we're just doing the reading now.
Yeah, it's not much.
So, yeah. So I'll move it and I can send the first reading.
A move to accept the first reading. The 1920 middle school, high school handbook dress code updates is presented.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? All right, motion carries. Public comments? Anybody like to adjust the board regarding anything in the district? Yes, sir. Could you state your name?
Hi, my name's Jeremy Valley. I'm a parent. I have a student at the middle school and the high school. I came to talk about the dress code. I was, thought it was nice that some of my comments that Mike brought up earlier were taking action. And I see the agendas are posted today. I thought that was fantastic. I'm glad to hear that you're going to be putting emails up there. I don't need to individually contact the board, but having a means of communicating with the board would be ideal, just so you have a better way to hear from parents. I think that's fantastic. I'm an administrator in another district. Been in schools 25 years. We don't have a no jacket, no coat policy. I had my daughter do an informal pool at the Career Center with neighboring districts, and none of the students there were aware of a no coat, no jacket policy. I checked with the policies that are posted on other districts' websites that were available to me in Bay County and Harnett County. And I couldn't find any of that stipulated, no coat, no jacket. I'm not saying they don't prohibit that, or I'm not saying they do prohibit that. Couldn't find any documentation. So I'm opposed to the idea. I think if the kid wants to wear a coat or a jacket, that's great. I've been in the meetings with Tom Meisner. I've talked with our SRO, our School Resource Officer. We happen to have gone through a substantial amount of training this year because he's new to being an SRO, although he's been in law enforcement for quite a few years. None of them have talked about coats or jackets being a safety consideration within the classroom. Backpacks are a distraction, a disruption, could be a safety concern. If we're letting kids in coats and kids in jackets enter the premise, weapons already on the building premise, if it's in their locker, they have access to it between classes. You have lunch during open lunch, I'll find another time. So making that a safety excuse to ban these, I don't buy it. So as a parent, I'd just like to say, I'd like to have that reconsidered. I'd also like to know if parents had true involvement with the dress code committee. I know the board minutes had stated that committee meetings are posted on the website, so we know when they are. Can't find that on the website. I have looked. So if that stuff is out there, maybe I need some help finding it up. Some of that communication, I think, is lacking. And one last thing on communication. When you do an announcement from your administrators, or a school messenger, or whatever your call-out system is, when it happens at 3:45, that's a time of the day when students are home to answer the phone, but parents are at work. And if the student answers the phone, the parents never get the message. So check in the box to also send an email at that time or post it on the website would be greatly appreciated by the parents.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to adjust the board? Yes, sir.
I don't think the safety thing, because I mean.
Could you say your name?
Jason Sparks. I have a couple of students that go to school here. Yeah, I don't, I guess I don't understand that. The safety thing is, like he said, I could have a gun, I mean, right now. I don't, but, I mean, and I'm wearing a sweatshirt, you know what I mean? So the hiding it, I mean, if you're going to get it in here, you're going to get it in here. So that's all mine.
All right, thank you. Anybody else like to adjust the board? Again, thanks for coming. Anybody from the board have any discussion items?
Yeah, just real quickly, I'm sure. So I thank the board for allowing me to go to the Michigan Association of Schools Board Conference. Really busy weekend, packed full of lots of workshops. And I got a lot of my CEUs in for Level One. But I gave each of you guys a little bracelet. It's called Be Nice is the Program. One of the workshops I went to, Granville Schools, actually started this. And it kind of aligns with, I think, you know, you say we might have the Yellow Ribbon Campaign. But this is, this is something a little bit different. It kind of aligns with that, though. But I really liked their concept and how much success they've had with it over on that side of the state. And it's really grown even just in the community and neighboring schools. And they said they've actually started outreach and having it in some schools over here. But, so be nice. The nice stands for notice. You know, notice what's good and right for the person next to you. And if anything changes, just be noticed in, you know, people around you, the student around you. You know, if you just notice one thing they're saying, like, you know, hey, his hair always looks really good every day. And then, if he comes to school and his hair's like messed up and he's not, you know, just take notice of that. Or notice that that kid's sitting by themselves in the cafeteria, and they're normally not. And then, and then the I stands for invite. You know, then invite that conversation, like, hey, I've noticed that he was sitting alone today, you know? And then the challenge, you know, how long have you been feeling this way? You know, for students, we wouldn't ask them to, you know, put themselves up. If the child then says, you know, something about, you know, well, you know, I'm not feeling good, they maybe disclose that, you know, that they're having some issues with depression or having thoughts about hurting themselves, then that student has someone that they can go to, much like the Yellow Ribbon Campaign. And that's the E in that. But, you know, I just thought maybe it's something we could take a look at. And I just wanted to bring that back information for you guys.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to adjust the board? I'd like to kind of piggyback off that. I also went to the conference this weekend, got a lot out of it. Matter of fact, I did go to a social media one and got some ideas for updating what we're doing. Sorry, Jay. I know you're overworked already, but I got a few ideas. I want to do that, where we can get that information out. So I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Valley. I think we can do a better job there. And had a lot of good information that I'd love to throw at you guys, administrators. But I know you're really overworked, so I'm trying to pick and choose what I want to attack here because you guys do a great job. So again, thank you for that. It was really good information. Hopefully, Nicole and I can both bring something back to make our district better. Anything else? If not, undertake a motion.
Make motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.